I call the Tuesday, May 28, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Our invocation will be by Pastor Robert Lee of the Collinswood Acapie Baptist Church. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand. And then after the invocation, I'll ask everyone to stand and Councilman Bill Moody will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for another beautiful day and we thank you for allowing us the privilege to come and take your business for the city of Portsmouth. We ask your blessings upon our city council, our mayor, our staff, the employees and the citizens, and we invite your presence to be made known here today. Give us wisdom, knowledge and understanding to do your will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll next have our roll call. We'll do this electronically. To my colleagues on council, please indicate your presence here tonight by hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum, do we not? Our next is the consideration of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of May 13, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of May 14, 2019, and the minutes of a regular meeting of May 14, 2019. We'll consider all three in the same motion. Is there a motion to approve?
To adoption.
Sir.
Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. We next come to special presentations. And we have a longstanding committee called the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee. Portsmouth's heritage from its earliest days is joined with our nation's military. And I want to ask Councilwoman Simmons, who sits on that committee, to join me and its chairman, Irv Lindley, to come to the front here for these special presentations.
I think we'll just do these one at a time? You want to do them all together? All right. So Captain Culp, would you come forward? Let's get over here where there's a better picture opportunity. So ladies and gentlemen, this is Captain Christopher Culp. In July of 2016, he became, came here to serve as commanding officer of Naval Medical Center Portsmouth. He has a distinguished career in the Navy where he's held several important positions in leadership. He is certified by the American Board of Internal Medicine since 1991. He's a member and fellow of the American College of Physicians. He was the college's 1997 Henry Sparks Award winner for Excellence in Internal Medicine and a 2007 Laureate Award winner. He served as the Navy Surgeon General Specialty Leader for Internal Medicine from 2000 to 2006. He has loads of awards. He has a wonderful wife, Lynn, and they are going to be departing us in July of this year. And he's awaiting his new assignment. And we just want to say thank you so much for being here and being part of the Portsmouth family. And the certificate reads, Certificate of Appreciation to Captain Christopher M. Culp for your loyal service, diligence and dedication to the city of Portsmouth as commanding officer of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard and for hav-- nope, that's not the right one.
I'll take that. No staff.
Yeah. It sure does say the-- well, we'll say Naval Medical Center Portsmouth and for serving as a tireless advocate for the Portsmouth Mayor's Military Affairs Committee. The sentiment is right.
Okay. Well, I just want to, I just want to thank Captain Culp. His group has been under, under a lot of stress here with the comfort going out on missions in South America and things like that. But with, besides that, they offer an awful lot of volunteers to the community for community activities, the parade and things like that. And we're grateful for that. And your staff has been attending our meetings and we're trying to get the word out of what's going on in the city and what we can do for the military and what the military can do for us.
Not to be redundant, but I take every opportunity that I can to brag about what I call the Portsmouth Naval Hospital. Bar none, I think it's the greatest hospital in the United States, and I sincerely mean that. Its first mission is to take care of casualties from our next war. And so by definition, they're a trauma center. And I think that they give extremely excellent healthcare that not only impacts our women and men in uniform, but our whole community as well. And we're going to miss you, Captain Culp. Thank you for a job well done.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been the honor of a lifetime to lead the 6,800 men and women of Portsmouth for the last three years and to be a part of this community for 13 of my 30 years of service. The hospital will be in as good a hands with the 76th Commander as it has been with the 75th. But the 75th, before I leave, wants to thank you and the leadership behind us for the renewed, dedicated, energetic outreach back to one of your largest constituents. And I hope to see that continue into the future.
Oh, it will.
I'd like to give you one of my personal questions, just as a token of my appreciation for the affiliation.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
You want to?
Wait a while. Got to do a wedding control.
We'll swamp out that certificate. That's a one of account. Command Master Chief Reese. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Command Master Chief Michael L. Reese. He has been the Command Master Chief at Norfolk Naval Shipyard since December 2014. He is qualified in service in aviation warfare and holds an Associate of Arts degree in Business Administration from Liberty University. He has a distinguished career in the Navy, including deployments in Operation Desert Shield, Storm and Iraqi Freedom. He's been a huge supporter of the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee, and I do mean that sincerely, up to and including marching behind the 50 Flag Unit in yesterday's Memorial Day Parade, marching behind his guys, which was pretty impressive, along with the fellow that's going to take his position as Command Master Chief at the Naval Shipyards. That was, that was very impressive. He is retiring from the Navy, May 31 of this year, and returned to his hometown in Gladys, Virginia. Where is that?
About 30 and a half hours.
Well, all righty then. And we really are going to miss you. You've been an integral part of this community and this, this committee, and we really thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Let's see what this one says. Oh. This, this one's good. This one says, Certificate of Appreciation Presented to Command Master Chief Michael L. Reese for your loyal service, diligence and dedication to the city of Portsmouth as the Master Chief of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard and for having served as a tireless advocate for the Portsmouth Mayor's Military Affairs Committee. Well done.
Well, I would also like to congratulate Command Master Chief Reese. He has been a tremendous supporter for the committee and anytime we need anything from the shipyard, we really appreciate it. They've come out with community activities, with volunteers. We can count on them in the parade. The 50 Flags is certainly a big part of that whole thing. And we wish you all the best in the future. And thank you again for your service.
To use a dairy metaphor, the cream always rises to the top. And you don't become a command master, master chief in the Navy unless you're the highest quality cream and you're just that. We're going to miss you, miss your leadership and miss your presence here in our community and at the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, which is actually in Portsmouth.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for the recognition, but most importantly, thank you for your continued support for what you're doing, not only for the citizens here, but for the military men and women that work here and live here. As the captain said, we really appreciate that support and I know in the future it's going to get even better. So thanks again.
Thank you.
care to our children in Portsmouth who are in need of foster care. This is something that the city council started last year to honor all our foster care families. And Ms. Goldens here from the Department of Social Services, and if you'll join me up here, she'll introduce our foster care families. Please, if you'll come forward. neither family is here yet. So why don't we just put this presentation on hold? And if they're here by the end of the meeting, we'll handle it then. Okay? Thank you. Our last presentation is the presentation of lapel pins to newly appointed members to our boards and commission. And Councilman Moody, if you'll come forward.
If the following would join Councilman Moody at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, please. Ms. Charlene Chavis, she's representing the Behavioral Healthcare Services Advisory Board. Ms. Latonya Height, Latoya Height, and she's representing the History Commission. Ms. Regina Humphrey, she's also on the History Commission. And Mr. Jason Fox, representing the History Commission. And Mr. Ambicker, Ambiki, thank you, Bolden, and he's representing the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Let's give it up for our newest Boards and Commission volunteers. We love you all and we need you all. You know, by your volunteerism, you're joining a team. I think we have almost 300, over 300 volunteers on our boards and commissions. Along with city council, you're going to be part of a team. We need a team as we seek to make Portsmouth a better place to live, work, play and to do business. So y'all are an important part of what, what the city is all about. And thank you again for your volunteerism. And since there's a few number of you right here, tradition has it that we always let you say a few words. So we're going to carry on with tradition.
And Councilman Moody, as you are selecting a speaker, we also have Ms. Amira Batia here with us. If she would come forward, please. And she represents the Library Board.
I'd like to thank God most of all for having me the opportunity to be on advisory board. And I'm going to get a lot out of it and just share my opinion, you know, on the board. Thank you.
I also would like to thank the Lord Jesus Christ as well for being here. And I'm just happy to be a part of any board and commission that I could help the city out with. My main goal is to be a productive member of the city and to help and aid in any way that I can.
Good evening. Thank you to mayor and council members for appointing me to the History Commission. And it's my goal to serve best that I can. And I'm just happy and looking forward as being a citizen and an employee to do the best that I can for the History Commission. Thank you.
Hello. I just wanted to thank you for appointing me to this commission. And I'm going to serve the city of Portsmouth the best I can while I volunteer and do whatever I can to improve the lives of the citizens here.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be appointed to this position. I thank you all. I'm not much for words, so thanks again.
Good evening. I'm with him, but I would say I'm glad to be appointed to the Library Board to bring fresh ideas, being I have three young kids. Being from the city of Virginia Beach prior before moving to Portsmouth, there's a lot of things that I think should be implemented when it comes to the different libraries in Portsmouth. So I hope I can bring those to the table and move things successfully forward. Thank you.
Let's hear it again for our Boards of Commission volunteers. And thank you again.
And thank you all for volunteering our scarce resources, our time. And we appreciate your, you giving up your time to serve our city. While we're under special presentations, I think we have a member of the school board here, School Board Member Khu Akerson. Will you stand up, please? Thank you for attending. With that, Madam City Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to public hearings. We actually have two. You do not have, there's no requirement for you to sign up prior to the public hearings. Once I open the public hearing, if you desire to speak either for or against the issue that's before council, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, our first public hearing is 19-192. And would you read the caption for this public hearing?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the proposed adoption by the city council of a resolution to authorize the city to contract a debt and issue general obligation bonds of the city or notes in anticipation thereof in a principal amount estimated not to exceed $28 million to finance the cost of the city's capital improvement program as city council may amend it from time to time, including the cost of seawall reinforcements and improvements and the cost of issuing the bonds.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I now declare the public hearing on the issuance of bonds, item 19-192, open. And we do have one citizen who has requested to speak, and that is Donna Si. So we'll take you first, ma'am. You've got five minutes.
My name is Donna Si and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Resolution 19-192 will authorize the city to contract a debt and issue general obligation bonds by the city of $28 million to finance the city's capital improvement program. The resolution goes on to read that the city council may amend the resolution from time to time to include the cost of the seawall reinforcement and improvements and the cost of issuing the bonds. There is no evidence to support where the $28 million is going to finance the necessary capital improvements. There is no evidence to support why the city council may amend the resolution to include the cost of the seawall reinforcement and improvements. There is no evidence to support the cost of issuing the bonds. I wrote to the elected an email to ask for assistance to oversee that we, the people, get information that is simple and comprehensive so we are able to give our consent. In the email, I informed my representative that I would come down and get the facts to assess the need for the $28 million to be borrowed. When I came to City Hall, I was informed to go to the Finance Department. The secretary in the Finance Department left to obtain information to help me. The director came in to get her paperwork and told me that I had to go to the Communications Department, that the city manager controlled her and she wouldn't help me. I did go to the Communication Department and received help. I go home and began to print out over 200 pages and my ink ran out twice. I couldn't finish my project. Here I am without any help from the people that were elected to carry out the principles, a lifelong learning city which fosters education in its broadest sense, a safe, friendly city which values, respects and protects all its citizens, visitors, neighborhoods and businesses, and a compact for leadership, focus on respectful communication, speak with one voice, share information, no surprises, lead by example, commit to teamwork and zero tolerance for disrespect. My need to know has not been respected in this situation. There was no response from my email to help me gather the information needed to give my consent on this resolution. I will give you an example of the research I have done with the capital improvements regarding the three pages of the Fleet Management, 14-126 through 14-128. Why are we leasing vehicles? Why are we borrowing money to upgrade the fuel station? Why are we borrowing money to lease vehicles? Why are we borrowing money for project management? We need to have a spreadsheet like the information I have below before you vote tonight on the resolution. I was really concerned about getting no help to do my research. And here, my voice does not matter to anybody. And I gave you an example of what I needed. Nobody responded. Government is a 24/7 job and that's what I do. I'm here for the people. I'm not here about borrowing money without our consent.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing on the issuance of bonds. Are any, any other speakers tonight that would want to speak on this matter? If you do, please come to the lectern. You'll have five minutes. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And Madam Clerk, we have a second public hearing on a use permit application, and that's item 19-193.
Yes, sir.
And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. UP 1906 Midtown Edgar Costello of Amer-- --of American Engineering on behalf of the property owner, PMIG 1021 LLC, requests a use permit for a Take Five oil change facility at 800 Frederick Boulevard. The comprehensive plan, future land use map recommends commercial land use for the property. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. Our protocol is for the city manager, the city manager, statistic need to give us a briefing on this matter and to give the applicant 10 minutes to present his application. We'll take the applicant first. Is the applicant present? And sir, you have 10 minutes to explain your application to the city council and to the public.
Hi, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Edgar Costello. I'm with American Engineering in Virginia Beach. I'm a senior engineer, project manager, been there for a few years. So thank you for your time this afternoon or this evening. Ms. Porter is going to help me with the, with the slides that I presented to city council last month. So, so, and, and so this project is for a Take Five oil change facility, which falls under the classification of an auto repair and servicing facility without painting and bodywork. And that, under the ordinance, that requires a use permit for the general mixed-use zone classification. Just to describe Take Five oil changes, they, they offer oil and filter changes, filling of other fluids, wiper checks, tire pressure checks, and they do this all within about five minutes. And, and they're different because there's no need for you to get out of your car. They, they don't even allow you to get out of your car. They, they give you a complimentary bottle of water even. So that's, that's a nice touch. So they have hundreds of locations all over the United States. There's, right now, there's four in Virginia Beach, one in Chesapeake. Everybody needs to get their oil changed and not getting out of your car is very convenient and being, as well as being in and out of there in just five minutes. So the project is at, go back, well, the project's at 800 Frederick Boulevard, which is a pretty unique site because it fronts both, fronts Airline, Frederick and South Street. And it's a very, very, very tight site at less than half of an acre. And the site itself is, it's in a high visibility area with that, with that intersection. Previously, there was a gas station there for many years and it's since been demolished. The site is zoned general mixed use and it's, it's surrounded by other mixed-use businesses. There's, there's First Virginia to the north, there's Advanced Auto to the northeast, Wells Fargo, Town Club and a restaurant to the south, and a couple other, there's a Walgreens across the street on the west side of Airline. So the, so this is a slide of the existing conditions. And then there's still lots of remnants of the gas station. They took out all the tanks and the pumps and the, and there are the, I believe there is a service convenience store building there as well. All of that's been demolished. There's still some gas station signs up. There's existing asphalt, concrete that is really not in good shape at all. So the plans remove, include removing all of these existing onsite features. Right now, there's, there's five different driveways or entrances into the site. We don't need that many. And it causes a mess. So we're, we're reducing the number of entrances to, to, to two, actually. Next slide. So, so this is the site plan that we submitted when we did, when we, when I presented to Planning Commission, which has since changed. The concept is very much the same, let's see here, that there's only, according to the, based on city ordinance, there's only, because of the size of the building, only three parking spaces are required, but we're providing six to seven. And all those parking spaces are just for, for the employees. Spaces are based, are for the employees because there's, there's, again, there's no reason for customers to get out of their cars. Customers aren't even allowed to drop off their cars to pick up later. So around the site, we're going to connect all the sidewalks to, to get the pedestrian circulation, you know, get that right there. you know, get that right there. Let's see here. For landscaping, we're working with the city to just enhance that whole intersection, just because it's such a high-visibility intersection. So the changes that we have, so we've gone after Planning Commission approval, we submitted a different site plan, which is similar. Still has the entrances and exits off of Airline and Frederick, but we've slightly moved the building down. And it really gives a little more, little better circulation around the building. We've closed off South Street, and so it works a little better for vehicle circulation around the building, just to have the two entrances off of Airline and Frederick. Next slide. So these are the, these are typical building elevations. The color scheme's going to be similar to all the other Take Fives that are in the area. And next slide. So this is a slide of the existing conditions there. We're going to take down all the, all the gas station signs, and we're really just going to make this site look a lot better than it does now. And just to conclude, I feel that the construction of this Take Five oil at this intersection will just work well with this intersection, and it'll really enhance and fit in with the surrounding area.
Thank you, sir. Does any member of council have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. John Hartley, the Planning Administrator, will provide some additional information to City Council, including a report back on the action of the Planning Commission.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. This item was considered by the Planning Commission at their April 2 meeting, and they recommended approval five to nothing with the conditions. You have a copy of those conditions in your packet, and I'd be glad to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, sir. Any questions to Mr. Hartley? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing on conditional use permit 19-06. And I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak either for or against this zoning application? Please come to the lectern, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Michael Thornton, and I stay at 1306 Marshall Avenue in the Brighton neighborhood. So, yeah. I think this will enhance, enhance that part of Portsmouth, because I've walked by that location a lot of times, and it's kind of depressing to see that rundown parking lot. And yeah, so I'm glad that they're going to do something with it. And that does sound like a pretty good idea. That sounds pretty cool, like that quick oil change. Yeah. So, so I do hope you let this project go through, because it'll increase, well, yeah, it'll help our economy, and it'll make it look better, too. So I'm looking forward to that. I don't even own a car, but it'll be good for us anyway. All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other person in the audience want to speak at this public hearing, either for or against this matter? Any other speakers? Hearing or seeing none, I declare this public hearing closed. This matter is on our first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion by council on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to the City Manager's Report, item 19-194, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Portsmouth, Virginia general obligation bonds.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-195, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting supplemental funds from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $11,500 for the Title IV E Fostering Futures Foster Care Program, $153,366 for the federal adoption assistance, and $114,452 from the state adoption subsidy and special service payments, and appropriating set funds in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion, which is to adopt? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-196, 196. The consideration and adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the grant of a public utility easement to the city of Suffolk having a width of 30 feet and a total area of 3,030 square feet across a certain property located in the Holy Neck Borough of Suffolk.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Ready for discussion? Any discussion on this motion? Hearing and none, ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-197. The consideration and adoption of another resolution. And would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the grant of utility easements over city-owned property necessary for development of the Churchland Bridge replacement project.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, which is to adopt the resolution. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business Boards and Commissions. Councilman Moody.
There are no appointments to deliberate tonight, Mayor.
The next item is 19-199, item submitted by council members, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of items tonight. The first, in lieu of a military affairs liaison report at the 5 o'clock meeting, I wanted to make this a little more public at this meeting, that yesterday we had a flawless 135th Annual Memorial Day Parade in our city. It's the longest continuously operating Memorial Day Parade in America. And it doesn't happen by chance. There are a lot of people in this city who make that parade happen, and I wanted to take an opportunity to thank them, particularly the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee, which you saw earlier, which is very ably chaired by Colonel Irv Lindley, Army retired, Albert Williams, Ron Peterman, Terry Danaher, all volunteered many, many hours to make this happen. The Command Master Chiefs, Commander, Master Chief Reese that we met earlier tonight, and the CMC from the hospital, and the two from the Coast Guard, very integral parts of getting the volunteers, of the enlisted men and women that helped. But we also, of course, have the police, the Fair Department, EMS, the Sheriff's Auxiliary Bike Patrol was out. We actually had a, some sort of minor EMS incident during the parade. I saw Battalion Chief Arnold running down in his little scooter in the middle of the parade in the opposite direction to tend to someone. Those people were all out in force. But our Parks and Recreation Department, and in particular Renee Spratley, under the direction of the Director Mark Palmitchuk, and of course Deputy Manager Lavoris Pace, the parade simply would not happen without Renee Spratley. And I wanted to say that publicly because she and her team really worked very hard. They spent months getting ready for this, and it shows when we have a flawless operation like we had yesterday. So I wanted to thank them. As far as upcoming events in the city, we have a couple of things that will happen before we meet again. Quite a few things this coming weekend. On Saturday, June 1, we will have a free concert in the Museum Courtyard at High and Crawford Streets from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The Rhythm Project All-Star Steel Band Ensemble, who are always so popular, will be playing in the courtyard from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also on Saturday, at the Cedar Grove Cemetery at 10:00 a.m., there will be a grave marking ceremony from some of the Revolutionary War patriots who are buried there. That is the oldest cemetery in the city, and so I encourage folks to come out at 10:00 a.m. on June 1st at Cedar Grove Cemetery. If you're looking for a job, between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., the Naval Facilities Engineering Command, NAVVAC, at Mid-Atlantic will be having a job fair from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. this Saturday at the Chesapeake Conference Center. And then in two weeks, we will have our Seawall Music Festival. That's Friday and Saturday, June 7th and 8th. And there will be musical entertainment and children's activities, and that's all at the foot of High Street at High Street Landing this year. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. And the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. As liaison to Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, I would like to congratulate them on their eighth annual scholarship brunch that was held this Saturday, the 24th, at Elizabeth Manor Golf and Country Club. They gave over $20,000 worth of scholarships to students in the Portsmouth community. Being that it's graduation time, these students are in need of these scholarships to help further their education. And on that note, I'd like to also thank the local fraternities and sororities, who's also giving scholarships to deserving students in the Portsmouth communities.
Thank you very much. Which brings us to report on pending items. Mr. Baldwin, do we have any pending items?
No, sir.
And this concludes our items on the agenda. We bring now to non-agenda speakers.